Welcome to the twenty six meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Uh, when addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly and to speak into the microphone. Uh, we have some minutes to approve, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of October thirty first, twenty twenty four, that's the fifteenth meeting.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the uh one thirty twenty five. Uh, regular and executive session meetings on the fifteenth, ten thirty one, twenty four meeting, uh. Any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the uh minutes are approved. Okay, calling agenda item number one. Uh, application number two, three dash zero, one, one, three, four, Ohana Hale Liquor LLC, hello, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners, Terry Lee, Councilman, applicant. To my right is Chris Ulu, who is the operations manager for the applicant, um, you know. We, we, Mr. Ulu has spoken to some of the owners of the condominium units that, that filed that written protest. And I'm pleased to inform the commission that. Uh, Mr. Ulu has sublet that interior space that was of concern about the noise emanation and so on. To a Korean bakery and restaurant. So that type of operation, you know, clearly does not. Create the same kind of concerns as these concerts and other public type events. Um, so they, they, they've signed the sublease, they're in the process of setting up their equipment and so on and uh. The only music that we're aware of that they would play is background. Dining music for dining.
All right, Mr. Ryan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this matter was continued from the January second and January sixteenth meetings. Public hearing kept open to resolve certain issues pertaining to the affidavit of mailing and to tabulate protests with respect to protests submitted. You have a copy of the supplemental licensing investigative report that indicates that. Forty one uh signatures, protest signatures uh was received with respect to those forty one um. Uh, signatures, the percentage of owners lessies within five hundred feet protesting a license represented. One point zero five percent in percentage of registered voters within five hundred feet of the proposed premises protesting the license. Represents two point two one percent applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Hey, is there anyone who would like to testify for or against this application?
Okay, seeing none, Commissioners, questions?
I have no questions.
Motion to approve application number two, three dash zero, one, one, three, four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two, three dash zero, one, one, three, four. Uh, any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes aye, your application is approved, congratulations.
And well known for the record that you will work with licensing with respect to this sublease issue.
Okay, uh, calling agenda item number two, application number two, three dash zero, two, zero, two, eight from Island Brew Coffee House.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Ms. Hiri, Robert Wioke, on behalf of Island Brew Coffee House, present to my right, Mr. Rafael Baez, he is the Vice President.
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this application has received one written protest, zero letters of support. Applicants but statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Hey, is there anyone who would like to testify for or against this application?
Seeing none, Commissioners, questions?
I have no questions.
Motion to approve application number two, three dash zero, two, zero, two, eight, second.
So moved and seconded to approve application number two, three dash zero, two, zero, two, eight, any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the application is approved.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Uh, calling agenda item number three, application number two, five dash zero, one, four, six, zero, dash, one, the two, five dash zero, one, four, six, zero, dash, three, run.
Two, five, three, five, point, one. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stephen Nicole, we are representing twenty five thirty five coin corporation, DBA, RB Sports Bar and Grill. Uh, these are specials in order to buy us time while we get our. Permanent license done, um, I would make a request if at all possible, if we um. If we're able to get our license before this period is up, if we could get the refund on the, the days remaining, please.
Okay, so noted, um, are you aware of the reduction in fees that we're considering for special licenses?
It's awesome.
And so one of the questions that we're going to ask is, um, you know. What do you think are the holdups in, in, in your uh process right now that requires a temporary life of the special license?
Um, what, it, it seems like it's more of a workload thing, um, we have three, maybe four investigators working on. Seventy cases individually, and I mean, it's just not humanly possible to do all of that in one shot, so, um. Uh, I, I'm not sure what the.
Um, no, if we were waiting for something from you, then we would be not so inclined to.
Oh, yeah, no, everything is in, we, um, we were working through some, some issues with the, with the floor plan and stuff, but those seem to be worked out, so. It's, it's more a matter of us just trying to.
No, and, and if it's a matter of us not having the uh enough staff to go through the workload, then it seems like we shouldn't penalize you with the price of.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, all right, so that's just something that's coming up at the end of this hearing for a discussion.
Thank you.
All right.
I have no questions.
That for me, uh, uh, motion to approve application numbers two, five dash zero, one, four, six, zero, dash, one. To two, five dash zero, one, four, six, zero, dash, three, one, inclusive.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve applications number two, five dash zero, one, four, six, zero, dash, one, to two, five dash zero, one, four, six, zero, dash, three, one, inclusive. Any nays or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. All right, thank you.
Yeah, because number four is going to.
Yeah, okay, calling it the item number four, uh, application number two, five dash zero, one, four, six, nine, Events International, that one we're skipping.
Yeah, that'll. Um, and actually, the, the applicant uh has requested rescheduling to next week's agenda, no commission action required.
Now, calling agenda item number five, application number two, five dash zero, one, four, eight, two, Island Sound Studios LLC.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Stephen Nicole, we're representing on this on studios LLC, um, this is for a. A holiday party, believe it or not, uh, that they're happening, that's happening a little bit later on, uh, it's about fifty to seventy five people. Um, doors closed again as always, uh, it is a private party, so there will be no other people allowed on the premises.
Commissioners, questions?
I have no questions.
Motion to approve application number two, five dash zero, one, four, eight, two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five dash zero, one, four, eight, two, any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six, application number two, four dash zero, one, six, eight, nine, from Alejandro Pearl City, hello.
Uh, Alejandro Alvarado, A L E J A N D R O, uh, last name A L V A R A D O.
Uh, Commissioners, questions?
So, the only question I have is an outdoor seating area, it looks like you also have demarcated a dance floor.
Oh, yeah, oh, well, I had.
I'm, I'm just asking, like, all I'm asking is if you're gonna be doing dancing out there, right, and you are gonna have sounds, right, or a sound system or something. Just be cognizant of your neighbors and people of that nature. Because if there is noise or there is things that come up, we're gonna want you to have a log or something in a, in a nature of that. Cause I'm assuming all the outside seating area also is enclosed in some type of railing or something.
That is correct, yeah.
So that would be my suggestion, like, as you go forward, and as these things progress, you may be wanting to. Have some type of log if someone does call about sound.
Perfect, absolutely.
That's my only comment.
I have done, um, make a motion to approve application number two, four dash zero, one, six, eight, nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, four dash zero, one, six, eight, nine, any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the application is approved. Thank you, thank you very much. Calling agenda item number seven, application number two, five dash zero, zero, two, eight, nine, from JS Reschon Court.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Min Young Woo, on behalf of JS Restaurant Court. Doing business at One University Stop. On my right is the Vice President, Yul Lim Ju, there are no uh corrections to the investigative report.
I have no questions.
Motion to approve application number two, five dash zero, zero, two, eight, nine.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two, seven, uh, sorry, application number two, five dash zero, zero, two, eight, nine. Any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number eight, application number two, five dash zero, zero, three, seven, four, Blackstone Security LTD.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission, breaking shoe for authorization, here on behalf of the applicant, we have received investigator phone's report, have no changes there, too.
Motion to approve application number two, five dash zero, zero, three, seven, four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five dash zero, zero, three, seven, four, any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nine, application number two, four dash zero, one, one, seven, four, Urasenke International. Hope I said that correctly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission Members, can I still appearing for the licensee? To my right is Eric Kawatani, last name spelled K A W A T A N I, his authorization for the licensee. No changes to investigative report, just to note, this is a transfer of shares between. The only two shareholders of the entity, uh, the individual gift, gifting the shares to a foundation, this is, it's a. It's a Japanese preparation and service of tea, me, promise.
I don't have any questions.
Motion to approve application number two, four dash zero, one, one, seven, four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two, four dash zero, one, one, seven, four, any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the application is approved.
Thank you, Danny.
Calling agenda item number ten, request number two, three dash zero, two, seven, one, zero, Montserrat Planning LLC.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission, breaking shoe for authorized agent, appearing on behalf of the. Licensee, to my right is Ikuko Sugihara, I have given her na, her spelling of her name to the hears report prior to the commencement of today's meeting. Uh, she was the prior agent and made the submitted the requests that we're considering today back in May of twenty six, two thousand twenty three. To my left is Akihiro, um, Sakamoto, who is this, Noriho, sorry, Noriiko Sakamoto. Um, and his name has, spelling has been already given to the hears reporter prior to the, the commencement of today's meeting. Um, we have received licensing technician's report, Isaac, uh, these report. Um, have objected to the fact of this conclusion that he says not statutorily. It does not meet the statutory requirements, and if necessary, we are ready to make further comments with regard to the report. Therein, but we do believe that it, it, you know, the, the licensee has met the statutory requirement. Uh, Miss Sugiru, upon being notified by the liquor commission that there was a possible problem with the. You know, with authorized members of the LLC filed this application nineteen, nineteen, well, more than nineteen, twenty months ago. Um, and when the notice of hearing came out in December of two thousand twenty four, that's the first time we received a, received a report. Uh, Mr. Luke, who's a prior agent, uh, took a look at it and was appalled by the fact that, you know, certain things occurred without his knowledge. Now, if the commission wishes to go back to two thousand seventeen when this license was issued, we'd be more than happy to do so, but I don't think it's really germane to the issue at hand. Although, uh, we do take issue with that.
Commissioners, questions?
So my only question currently will be, everybody that. We have on file currently is the correct listing of people and correct amounts and everything else of shares and everything else.
Correct, commission.
Correct.
It is correct.
Okay, yeah, that's my only major comment, I mean.
That's the issue.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure we have it correct now.
Yeah.
And, and so the request is separate from whether or not there's a violation.
Correct.
And so we can handle that separately.
Right, okay. I mean, and, and you know, if you got the further aspects of the report, we do take issue with it, I mean, honestly, um, there's some statements in there that.
But we could take that up.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Motion to approve request number two, three dash zero, two, seven, one, zero.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two, three dash zero, two, seven, one, zero. Uh, any nays or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application, uh, request is approved.
All right, thank you very much.
Uh, calling agenda item number eleven, request number two, five dash zero, one, four, two, four, KUY Restaurants Limited.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair Hong and members of the Commission, New Okota, appearing on behalf of KUY Restaurants LLC. Uh, we have not, appearing with me is Jared Brown, manager, we have no changes to the investigative report or the supplemental report. Uh, for the record, applicant has operated, uh, similar temporary extensions over the years with no problems. Uh, monitoring and security procedures are in place to monitor these expanded areas.
But, I can.
I mean, and the only question, so the extended ti, extended space is only when you need to use it for specific parties or when the. Jan group or whatever allows you to use the space anyway, correct?
It's not every day.
Yeah. Okay, I have no other questions.
Okay.
Motion to approve request number two, five dash zero, one, four, two, four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two, five dash zero, one, four, two, four, uh, any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, on to, I haven't done this in a while, so.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Clicka Warrington, Deputy Cooperation Council, handling the prosecution of today's adjudication matters.
Uh, calling agenda item number twelve, Beside Kitchen, LCB two, four dash zero, zero, five, two.
Yep, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Clicka Warrington, Deputy Preparation Council.
So, um, so, Ms. Warrington, in regards to, um, how were beside kitchen served? Because it doesn't look like anyone's here for it.
Uh, yes, so, the original notice was sent. And, um, it was continued from the last hearing November seventh, twenty twenty four, where the licensee was a no show. The notice was sent to the licensee on November seventh, twenty twenty four, of the continued hearing date, which is today, and no response was received.
Okay. So, Ms. Warrington, how would you like to proceed with this matter?
We would like to request default. And since this is the first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Yeah, um, with, with the service, right, was there, so that we already have it as it was sent certified mail and everything else, correct, to the address?
That is my understanding.
Okay. So my motion is going to be to issue default judgment for agenda item number twelve with the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
It's been moved and seconded to enter a default judgment on this matter. With a fine of, recommended fine of five hundred dollars, any nays or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion is carried. Calling agenda item number thirteen, Club Hot Ash, LTV two, four dash zero, zero, four, five.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Chief Yu, Chief Licensee, to my right is David Young. Y O U N G, he's the authorized agent, he's the general manager of Club Hot Ash. We waive reading of the charge in our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a plea of no contest, any nays or reservations seeing none, the.
Sorry, if I could.
He's got to make an amendment, oh, my, that's my fault.
Okay, if we could, we could orally amend the charge at this time.
Oh, okay.
And if I could, um, the charge would be orally amended to read, on or about. June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, licensee failed to make available for inspection and our auditing within the city and county of Honolulu. Its books and records for the last four years, indicating all income purchases, expenses and employee time. Records of licensees liquor business in violation of rule thirty, three dash eighty one dash seventeen point fifty four D. Of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
And we have no objection to the amendment, and we would waive reading of the amended charge in our plea of no contest.
Yeah, so, we'll take a second try at this, motion to approve, um, the, the plea of no contest to the amended charge, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the amended charge, uh, with a plea of no contest. Any nays or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Ms. Warrington, your recommendations for agenda item number thirteen?
This is the first violation with the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Okay, it's a huge.
Mr. Young's accountants was Arnold Green. And I've explained in other instances what Mr. Green, um, didn't do. In this instance, um, Mr. Young wasn't even informed, there was an audit that required four years of books. So, Mr. Young would give all of the. The Z tapes, which are the registered tapes, all of the, um. Records of income and expenses to Mr. Green and, and we don't know what he did with it. So, uh, like I said, when. When this hap, when the audit occurred, Mr. Young didn't even know about the audit.
So, two questions, I have two questions, and the first one, whoever can answer, cause I'm not sure who would know the answer. For the audit itself, who gets sent the information? Being told you have an audit?
It's usually the authorized agent.
The authorized agent, so that would have been.
Mr. Green.
Mr. Green was the authorized agent because he was the bookkeeper.
Bookkeeper, right.
Okay. Next question I have is for our, for you, Ms. Warrington, this is his first time violation? A first time violation? Okay, um, Mr. Huchi, how long is, um? Okay, um, Mister Huchi, how long is, um, your client or this company had this liquor license?
I got this liquor license, I'll say nine years ago, that part, right? Actually, it was two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen, yeah, eleven years ago. So, um. I, you know, because I got the license, I know the background. So this used to be the site of the old club electoral. And then the tenants moved out. The, um, landlord is Mel Isumi, who owns Allied Builders. And so I went out with Mel, saw the condition of the property. Um, Mel had go prepare some, some items, they had to repair others. We basically got a brand new license for this spot, so. Mister Young was with Mister Green. He and I talked a couple of months ago, he's now shifted over to Melrose.
Okay.
Uh, and that is unfortunately what has happened with at least three other Mister.
As you correct me if I'm wrong, I think with Mister Green has had a few issues of the similar kind of situation that come up.
But, but it, but he was also, um. Late last year, he was in the hospital for about two, three months, um. I have a client that needs Mister Green to testify a deposition. And getting him to do that's gonna be a huge challenge.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, that's a situation we got.
Okay. So Mister Kichi, I'm going to, um, make a recommendation. We do want you to understand that, you know, we do take it serious, even though it is Mister Green and there is issues, you know. We want to make sure when we look for, looking back to do any type of audits. It's basically to make sure everything is correct and clear and being out there, okay? But I'm going to take into consideration the fact of how long the license has been and this being a first time violation. So, I'm going to, um. Make a, um. Motion to approve a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number thirteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars, any nays or reservation. There also votes I, the penalty is approved.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Calling agenda item number fourteen, Encore Saloon, the daily burger, L C B two four dash zero zero five five.
Uh good afternoon Chair Hong and members of the mission New York, appearing on behalf of the transferee. Which is Bottega eighty eight LLC doing business as Jovetti. Uh because this is a transfer application, the violation transfers to the. Uh a future licensee, and so I'm handling this hearing. We enter a plea of no contest and waive reading of the charges, the charge.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a plea of no contest, any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes I, the plea is approved.
Ms. Warrington, your recommendation for agenda item number fourteen?
This is the first violation with the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Mister Gota explanations?
I have a good explanation other than, uh, I didn't intend to. Uh violate this, but I think the language in the agreements just didn't comply. So, went over the rules and the future transfer of this license should not resist this.
Okay, and so I mean, again, right, as we go, right, these are all important things for all licenses to know, because having a license is to their benefit. Um, so I'm going to, my motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number fourteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a fine of five hundred dollars, any nays or reservations seeing none, the chair also votes I, the fine is.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number fifteen, Lotus Honolulu at Diamond Head, L C B two four dash zero zero five one.
Good afternoon Chair Hong and members of the commission, New York, appearing on behalf of Lotus Honolulu at Diamond Head. Appearing with me is Carmine Iomazzo, that's spelled C A R M I N E, last name I O M M A Z Z O. Uh we entered a plea of no contest for both counts and we've reading of the charges.
Yes, a motion to accept the plea of no contest for charge one and charge two?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a plea of no contest for charge one and charge two, any nays or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the plea is accepted.
Yes, so Ms. Warrington, can you give us your recommendation for charge one first and then for charge two?
Charge one, it is a first offense, uh with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Okay. And then charge two?
For charge two, it's technically also a first offense with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Gota, do you, your client have explanations for charges one and charges two?
Yes, so for charge one, uh the hotel improperly sold a wine. Or to take off the premise without a meal. And so they made the mistake, uh staff was retrained, we went over the rules with them, it shouldn't happen again.
Right.
For count two.
Yes.
Uh this was problems with their gross liquor sales reporting. Again, it was misunderstanding and not understanding the proper reporting procedures. Auditing team worked with the staff for them to understand what the issues were, went over it, reports were corrected. And again, should not occur again.
Uh just understand, somebody went to the restaurant, bought a bottle of wine and walked off with it, exactly what?
Yeah, it was one of the owners of the hotel who purchased wine from their restaurant.
Okay. Sounded a little odd. Okay, got it.
Okay, well, my, my first comment will be, it's the owner of the hotel, but now he's also going to have its own problem. Because, you know, you as an owner also know what your licensee, right, rules should be, correct? So, my motion is going to be for charge one, to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. And for charge two, to also approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a fine of five hundred dollars for charge number one and for five, uh, five hundred dollars for charge number two. Any nays or reservations seeing none, I also vote I, the fines are.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number sixteen, Massa Market and Drive-In L C B two four dash zero zero six seven, hello?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my name's Young, Y O N G, H O and last name Song, S O N G. And I work for Massa Market twenty, over twenty years over there, first time I got this kind of happen. Oh, I got, I got.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
No? So Mister Song, what we're going to do is, we're gonna allow Ms. Warrington to read the charges.
Yes, man.
And we're gonna, yeah, then we're going to give you an opportunity to make a plea. And then we'll go through that process, okay? So Ms. Warrington, can you please read, um, charge one and charge two?
For charge one, on or about July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to display within the like liquor sales area of the licensed premises. A shelf price for each size of each brand of liquor sold in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty six point one of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. And for charge two, on or about July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Retail licensee failed to have a duly registered manager or assistant manager assigned to the licensed premises. In violation of rule that three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point nine, eight two, of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Okay, so Mister Song, you're going to have the ability to either accept the charge? Deny the charge or plead no contest to the charge? And then we're gonna go, we're gonna go through each one, okay? So for charge one, how do you plead? Accept the charge, deny the charge?
No, I, I accept the charge, sir, hundred dollars.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, we're going one at a time, it takes time, hold on, so for charge one, you accept.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go to charge two. You can either deny the charge, accept the charge, or plead no contest for charge two.
Can I explain to?
So, either, so, what you'll do is, we have to take a plea first.
Yeah.
And then depending on your plea, it will determine if there's a contested case later, or if you have time to explain.
I'm beautiful, everyone, sir.
Okay, so, okay, so you can either accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest.
Oh. No, because I'm accept the charge, but.
Right, this is too high. Okay, hold on, hold on. We're gonna allow you to explain.
Yes, sir.
After either you accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest, okay? So you accept charge two, okay? So I, I need, um, my, a motion to accept, um, the exception of charge one and charge two, the flit.
Been moved and seconded to accept charges for charge one and charge two, any nays or reservations seeing none. I also vote I, the charges are accepted.
Okay, uh Ms. Warrington, can you please provide your recommendation for agenda item number sixteen, charges one and charges two?
Yes, for charge one, it is a first violation with a recommended fine of one hundred dollars.
Okay.
For charge two, it is also a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Okay. Okay, so Mister Song, for charge one, you can give us an explanation, so what happened with charge one, which is. For not, um, displaying, um, a sale sign.
Okay.
On your shelves.
Oh, I wasn't that working at the time, but. Was always, oh, put aside, put down there, but I got the warning from the liquor commission. And the next day I caught it, oh, say you're at, always say you're even, oh, they do the price on the for the top. Because we, until twenty years over, they changed the price, they do that, we asked them and they changed the price. They changed the price tags of sign over there. But I tell them, change the policy sign because I got the warning, and then they say, okay, we go doing, and then he forgot. And one weeks later. Little later, I was. You know, after pandemic, we got stores really falling down, so, too much stress out of thing and then. I never think about it, I was thinking there and then second warning come out and then I say, oh my god, and then. Before, can, before pandemic, we can order the mainland, you know, sign stop, they sending the mainland, but now no one selling. We gotta make the payment, or we gotta make the stop for sell. And then at least they got the sign all, oh, oh, like a paradise, whatever island, they got the sign, so. They time for us for all this time. So I never problem until this time, first time I do, but this is my problem, so I was guilty. So, hundred dollar, I, I'm fine, sir.
So, okay, so have you figured out?
Yes, sir.
A way going forward to make sure your products are going to be, have signs? Only reason I'm asking this is even if you're okay now. If that happens again, you're gonna have another violation and you could be charged more of a violation fee. So have you figured out a way to get signages on your shelves? Um, for all of your products?
I bought it, science sticker.
Okay.
From the mainland.
Okay.
And just order, not long ago, I order and it's came in and then I put on this, they never put on, so I, I'm missing and I put on this. That side, so it's not gonna problem that one, sir.
Okay, so now, the next charge, charge two.
Yeah.
Do you have an explanation for this, which is not having a duly registered manager or assistant manager in charge of your licensed premises?
Yes, sir, there was, so I first warning, next day I come in here, I got the permission, I got the, uh, test. And I got the people, or second warning, I got already for, or, or what do you call it, or license? Or system manager card, so. Also wanting, I was forgot that that thing, and second warning people, I got already, so I don't think so. No, before warning and I gotta sign the verse, this is true, but. I never think about that thing, but was wanting, oh my god, I never get it that one, and then I got the test, everything, sir. Before second warning, I, I got already, oh, many just sign and everything, so stick or card, everything is from the store now, sir.
Uh are you the sole proprietor of this store?
The owner, no, oh, co- oh, corporation, sir.
Ah, okay, and then are you the only manager with a card?
Yes, sir.
And so, prior to you getting the card, you, nobody had a card at your store?
Sir, sir.
Okay, how many years was it going on like this?
I worked, started two thousand, sir.
Okay.
And then I owned the store since two thousand five or six, but never ever missing that this kind of happen. But it's after pandemic, all my loose everything, sir, sorry about that, that's my mistake, I know that. But I also explained to you, so I'm guilty, but second warning before I got the already card ready, so. This is warning is a warning, I have neither book, I cannot guilty for everything for sell. You, because a warning is a warning, and then you guys doing, and then I people, second warning, I got the already many cards, so.
Now, now you understand, like, you have to have a manager on duty, so on the days that you're off, right? You need somebody that has.
A card.
A card.
Who, who would that be?
It's more store, sir.
But.
So you there?
Okay, so, you're the only, so I guess what we're trying to say is, like, for instance, right now. If you're here, and just say your store is open. Don't answer, just say your store is open, if they're doing some, if you're selling alcohol, you don't have a manager on duty.
It's a retail license.
Oh, retail, oh.
One person needs to have an active card.
Okay. Okay, okay, got it, that's, thank you for the, okay, that, that helps me in that regard, okay, okay, all right, so. Yeah, all right. I'm going to, might not be favorable, but can we deliberate?
Yeah, we can deliberate. deliberate.
Sorry. Maybe this might help.
Ah.
To said, to said like, um, what Mister Young was talking about was that there was a violate, a warning for both charges one and two. On June twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and then these violations occurred on July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
So this is after they came back, right, after they warned him and then they came back.
Correct, I figured I let you focus on that.
Okay, we're done deliberating?
Okay, so Mister Song, I'm going to. Um, explain to you. What we're going, how we're going to treat these charges, okay? So for charge one. Okay, I'm gonna give you an explanation. We understand about the signage and we're glad that you've started and have now had signs. So in regards to charge one. I am going to change the amount that they're talking about and I'm going to recommend or I'm going to. State that it's going to be instead of a hundred dollars, a letter of reprimand for charge number one. Okay, so we're issuing you a letter of reprimand for that charge. Now. For charge two. It's very important. For your business to have gotten a manager card or an assistant manager card. And that during this time, for as long as you've had that business, only until recent, you've gotten a card. Which, you know, that's something that we. Wanna make sure someone understands the rules and laws of the liquor commission to be in charge or at least. Has that for your business, okay? So. That charge. I am going to amend, but I'm going to. Recommend a char- a amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for that charge. So I'll. Go back and say for charge one, I'm recommending a letter of reprimand, a motion for a letter of reprimand. If our charge two. I'm motioning for a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a letter of reca-. Reprimand for charge number one and a two hundred and fifty dollar fine for charge number two. Any laser reservation seeing none, the chair also puts eye. The uh. Fines are approved.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Calling agenda item number seventeen. The Windward Bar LCD two four dash zero zero four nine.
Good afternoon, Chair Hong and members of the Commission, Neil Gota appearing on behalf of the Windward Bar. Appearing with me is Darian Onatea, thirteen leader. His name is spelled D E R I O N, last name O N E K E A. Uh, we enter a plea of no contest and waive reading of the charge.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to. Uh, accept the plea of no contest and he knows a reservation, the chair also votes I, the plea is accepted.
Ms. Warrington, what is your recommendation for agenda item number seventeen?
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Gota, your explanations?
Yeah, so this is the reaction within Whole Foods Kibwa. Um, there was a changeover in what I'll call the POS system, so I think numbers weren't pulled properly. Auditing team, you know, work with Whole Foods corporate. Uh, to. Understand what went wrong. Whole Foods corporate, uh, a individual who worked with the auditors, put together sort of, I'm gonna call it manual for features, so. They know how to pull the numbers properly from the system. Uh, should not happen again.
Okay. So. Again, right, I think everybody understands very accurate, the crystals allow everybody to, you know. Pay pay their fair share, we know what's going on over there, so. So everyone understands that, so I am going to.
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, good.
You're confident that for twenty twenty four, everything is going.
Yes, I can well. The best. Like to the best we can, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so hopefully based on that, we'll see for twenty twenty four, but. I am going to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a fine of five hundred dollars and it means a reservation. None, I also put I the fine of five hundred dollars as approved.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number eighteen, Liquor Commission Discussion of Processes and Procedures. Uh, reduced fee pilot program. Striped tilos. We have some nice graphs, charts and.
We do.
The form.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, self- administrative of the Hollywood Liquor Commission. Um. The commission asked me or tasked me. To provide some information that will provide context and insight. Into why the commission is considering. Uh, reduced fee program or.
Can I ask a question first?
No, please, go ahead.
One second. It went to sleep mode and I I'm not gonna play around to try to figure out how to open it up. If someone can pop it up. On this computer, cause I don't know this one.
Doug, short off.
I don't know this one. I don't buy it, but I don't know that one.
Yeah, okay.
Just so I can see or pop the form up because I can't see the the form I grabbed, just so I have an idea what we're talking about.
Dead.
Alright.
Is everyone dead or?
No, just his browser went away, so.
I can just give you.
Oh, my gosh, a piece of paper.
Long as I got some.
Not helpful.
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Provide some insight to why you're considering the reduced fee program. For those who have used uh their their two temporary licenses. And are and are now relying on special licenses to continue to serve alcohol. Um, so. Doug, if you don't mind putting up the first. Graph. So essentially, this uh. Presumably, we'll have.
We have it.
So. This graph is, you know, just a just a simple compilation of of uh. Uh. Applications submitted. Uh, and applications. Completed. Over to over the. Year that by twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty one, fiscal year twenty twenty five. Um. And I think it it brings into the focus the fact that we've always heard anecdotally that the. Number of applications uh uh completed have never have never equal the number of applications submitted. Uh, and a a question was raised as to whether or not. Uh. Given given the the numbers that we're seeing, whether or not. Uh. The workload had had changed, so. I I arrived at a an FTE number for the for fiscal years twenty twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. I I I put FY twenty one there just so that I could start the analysis somewhere. And and you can see that uh. In terms of applications for FTE. Uh, in in terms of the FTE, it's relatively similar. Uh, you know, five point one eight FTEs in twenty twenty two, five point two eight FTEs in twenty twenty three. Five point one seven FTEs in twenty twenty four. And I arrived at that by looking at the total hours uh. Uh, and deducting military and leave without pay divided by twenty eight with the standard. Annual. Number for or for for work. Uh. And you can see that the 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 number of applications completed and the number and applications for FTE for 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 giving me. And and if you if you look at, if you look at the numbers and and just a simple average of things, um. On average, uh, one hundred thirty seven uh applications were submitted during those. Three years. And on average, ninety one uh uh. Applications were completed. Leaving a delta of forty six applications per year. Uh, given current, uh, given the average app- application for FTE over that time, it's about seventeen point four. Uh, you can see that will require about three FTEs to be able to. Address that delta forty six um. Cases. And moving on to the to the next uh, to the next uh. Graph. You see here the effect of the of uh of. Of the surplus um in 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 cases like that, so. Again, I started FY twenty one because it was the the number of. Of submitted and completed were pretty close, so. The outstanding applications were only three, so it's really really close. But then over time, you see the effect. That having a surplus of of of. Of. Submitted applications. That aren't addressed uh has on 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 the workload. Uh, of the team here. Uh. So you see that, uh, you know, uh. When you look at it, uh, at the total workload. It 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 jumps significantly over time. Uh, from one hundred twenty four to two hundred in twenty twenty two to uh two hundred and one at this point. And FY twenty twenty five. And you can see by the it it and when you look at the right hand side of the graph. Uh, of I'm sorry, the table. You'll see that that completion rate. Goes down as years go by. Goes up. And and the and the and the backlog gets bigger. Uh, and. Under those circumstances, that's why the commission is. Considering. Reducing the fee for specials, especially after two temporary licenses have already. Have already uh lapsed and. So and so applicants are trying to. Uh, continue to serve alcohol and it's and and. There's an understanding that. There's a there's a burden on them and you are trying, the commission is trying to reduce that burden as they try to continue with their business.
Yeah.
Okay. And finally, I think uh it's relatively simple form that that you created or I created. I'm I'm sure staff can make it make it look better. Uh. But essentially, the the important things is whether or not it's new application, the application numbers that they that they was submitted. Uh, with this transfer and so on and and perhaps the really critical thing is when the second. A hundred twenty day temporary expired, uh, or is expected to expire. And then. I think in terms of the analysis here, if there's a chronology of correspondences with. Uh, with HLC that the that applicant can fly, you you'll begin to see. Certain patterns as to what's what's happening, whether uh. The applicant has not been able to provide the things that the agency has asked for. Or whether the the agency just has enough time to look at at those applications. I think that will become pretty clear. Uh, and and I think if they have that, then you can you can ask your questions around those. Uh, points in time as to what's gone on and give give you an idea. Uh, as you look at the at the tally of circumstances, whether or not uh a reduction in fee is warranted for a particular applicant.
Yeah.
That's helpful.
And and it wasn't meant to be punitive to anyone. It's it's just meant to be that. If if our. Uh, staffing deficiencies in terms of processing in a timely manner is affecting. Our new applicants, then we should try to not penalize them. Uh, to the extent that they are currently. Uh, perhaps we should also add if they've had a preliminary hearing. Uh, scheduled onto this as well, because that means there are the cost of. And then moving forward or any other pieces of data we may want to have.
I I think it's a matter of administering that and you're free to decide whether or not you want this applied respectively. Or you want people, uh, you know.
Oh, no, I I meant um on this form, so they have a preliminary there. Maybe more. Um. I have a couple of questions. One is. Can you maybe? Uh, outline what the workflow would be for them, like what I'm imagining is. You know, after their second temporary, you know, it's. Is about to expire, uh, we have people coming before us saying that they want to get special license. Uh, anticipation of this happening. And so perhaps this form comes in with. Their special license application and at that time we would. We would address both of them together and then. The request kind of. Affects how we adjust the special app, like a special. Uh, license.
Yeah, I think we've traditionally broken the two up, but but as I as I've attended uh the these hearings. The commission is free to essentially uh take things out of order and have and discuss them simultaneously. Uh, and so I think you're you're free to do that. Despite the fact that I think the agenda will have to to uh reflect, you know, uh, hearing versus. Uh.
Oh, that's that's kind of mandated the order.
Yes, in order to like grant relief under other businesses, it would have to be agenda, then it when you could, then you can manage the. Uh, processing.
Okay.
You know, as long as we know it's there and it's on there, then you can take action on it.
Uh, cause I'd imagine we wouldn't. We can grant the special license and then set the pricing. Either before, it's probably. Incumbent on us to understand what the request parameters are before.
Not only that, I think I think we would want it to be where. A licensee that has went through their second um temporary and is going to go into a special. I think we should leave it upon them to determine to ask for this form. You know, I mean.
Right, because the default is you get the.
But I mean, at that point, instead of giving it out to them, we need to put it out. Whether it's through, once we determine how we're gonna do this and a pilot program, email blast or something to licensees. Or people that have filed, right? That this is upon them to. Send, give to us, explaining why.
I think we could we could raise for notification, uh, and I think uh. Uh, as people listen to to these meetings, uh, they'll they'll understand that you that the commission is looking. At something like this and hopefully uh will reach out and and you know, if they wanted to be able to discuss it. Uh, with with you at 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 hearing. We could we could put in agenda where a Judd item where licensees could 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 talk about their experience and why this would be important for them.
Okay, well. In general, I think it's gonna be good for that. If we're ready to go, we should go, but if. If not, uh, and we want to have a an additional public hearing. Um, because any of the licensees may want. Because any of the licensees may want to weigh in on this.
I I I I think we 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 can go if you wanted to go.
I think we should go.
Uh if if the if what I presented is okay with 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 you, then we can we can do that and in terms of uh. Items that are coming on that that may be on the agenda that are coming on agenda in future meetings, then we we could ask. Uh the uh applicants who are in the situation to say, hey, are you. Are you willing to put in a request and 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 discuss your case before the commission?
Okay, and and it's uh only on a go forward basis. We're not gonna look at it up in the past and. And and I kind of opened it up to the staff that's here. Do you do any of you want to? Provide any input?
While he's uh walking, I'll I'll make a comment is that technically speaking, the administrator can make that request on behalf of an applicant. If there is like um. Uh it's just that the information would need to be provided, but that is another way can get on the agenda.
Strasata.
Revising investigator that they'll suffer on. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this, so. It's just. It it seems like a good program, but I I may have some reservations upon. What we talk about with the applicants during their processing of their actual applications outside of the. Catering specials. Um we do have rules and restrictions regarding sunshine law where um information cannot be. Given to you prior to it being properly formalized and on an agenda.
Oh, but but I think these would be attendised items.
Know that the application as is is in progress, like they're newer transfer applications. Those to a certain extent cannot be discussed. Because we haven't completed investigation at at that stage. It it may encroach on sunshine law or. The rules.
Okay.
Oh, you're talking about the processing of the actual permanent, because they're they've gone through temps, they're moving to the specials. And the um they've not paid gone to prelim, for example.
Yes. It it may it may draw conflict for the applicant to explain to you. Details of the investigation as it's progressing when it's not even yet completed. And it may kind of walk into the disqualifying part.
I guess I guess what would be disqualifying for an applicant to say, I don't know. They think that they've submitted everything and they submit this form. And they come in front of us and they're like, we're almost done with our second temp and we're gonna have a bunch of specials. This is where we're at. Yeah, what would be a piece of data that would be disqualifying?
Um so if they over explain stuff like um details of the investigation, what they're trying.
Can you give me a solid example like? And and not a real one, just like made up at like.
Uh hypothetically, like they're they're determining how to meet their thirty percent for the classification for a restaurant class.
Okay.
And you know, for the investigators explaining to them that they have to meet that requirement, and if they disclose that ahead of time. And how they're gonna do things, it may prejudice, you know, the whole process. Before the investigation is actually physically completed.
Let's go through this a little bit more. So so they may or may not have some issues with making the thirty percent. And so you guys have are in discussions with them and that's what they're kind of working through on their license. And for them to say that at a public hearing here may taint our ability to make a decision in the future.
It may possibly too.
Like, we should get a ruling on that. Or before we, because that sounds reasonable for them to say, we're waiting. On something that's a decision point from us. And that's taking, you know, they haven't gotten back with us in a hundred twenty days on it. So then it's kind of on there, right?
Yeah, in in a way, and I I would look to corporation counsel to um.
I think about them being people who. Ultimately gonna decide on whether or not they get the license, right? So what kind of information are they gonna put forward that they're going to?
I I think the the.
The mission at a later time. It's so.
Yeah, so like the 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 details of the investigation, they they could make statements. There there would have to be some certain criteria what the cabin cannot say.
So what they're actually looking for is where is the stop, right? Where's the problem? So does the problem have to go so in detail? If it's really to determine if our fault or their fault? How far do they have to go? And you can start off. The the liquor commission can start off with, this is where the problem is. And then you guys limit the information that needs to go out and you can either have the licensee confirm or deny. So that they don't give out so much.
And and I guess since this is a pilot, we can kind of work through on a case by case basis, what it is that. May or may not be prejudicial in in the decision making process, but.
Sorry, but so even with the example for you. You're trying to make the thirty percent. How is that? How could that? Influence.
Well, okay, well, just just to read the rule, but three dash eighty one dash nineteen point twelve. Um disqualification of commission, a member of the commission. Number two has participated in investigation proceeding, the institution of the proceeding. Or has participated in the development of the evidence introduced in the proceeding and I would look to court counsel for. Possibly an opinion on what does that mean and to what extent?
So it doesn't. Participating in the investigation? I don't think so. I think it would be, they're asking a question, where's the problem? Is it an agency problem or is it a? A lic- is it a licensee problem? And if the answer to that is either one and they can't without going into too much detail. Because you guys should be able to do it behind with each other, right? Comes out here, at least it will be out in the open. It's not behind closed doors, but a commissioner is involved in the investigation of a licensee. So here, it's just a determination of where's the course, this stop gap, where's the 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 frog? And do they get their discount?
So it'd be a passive receipt of information without a dialogue taking, I mean, they're they're just gonna tell you and then. But this and that's about it, as opposed to, well, what do you mean by? You know, uh I don't anticipate you doing that. I don't think it's just it's just hearing what they're what, so you can just. And it's a a rough justice sort of.
Right, yes, right.
Always cautious, so for example, you do see the area where you could get into.
To stop them.
We can stop.
Stop them, I think people deal with the licensee and at that point, the commission determines, you guys can't determine.
Yeah.
It is, and at that point, you guys just say yes or no on.
Right.
Because that's the purpose of that, right? It's not to further investigate or get involved in the investigation.
But it's really for the vast majority that are held up because we're understaffed. Right, that's the.
That's a eighty percent scenario.
It 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 is for our our perspective is we we don't want to compromise. Your ultimate decision making in the in the process. And since we have specific rules that state that, you know, there's certain a lot of information that can go to you. Um for that reasons.
Well, and if it's controversial, then they have to say full price, like, okay.
So would we be so carrying both sides, right? Would we be better off? Like on this forum, having specific things such as they've turned in everything that's needed, a checkbox. Um when was the last discussion or conversation between the licensee and. Life and investigators, right? And. Because at that point, some of that stuff we'll see, we can just either confirm or deny. Did they talk to you guys on this? Or have you sent them this at or given them everything and this is the last date I heard from them? Because ultimately, I don't think we want to get into any parts of what. The investigation is. All we want to know realistically is licensee, if you haven't done something, we you ain't going to get a discount. Licensee, you've done everything and our guys, because of the lack or the inability of enough people. That's why they're not done yet, then we're gonna work with you to give you a break.
Uh we would want this to be overly invasive, like all of these requests will come up in the agenda. You'll be able to see it in advance. So if there's anything that's gonna be kind of controversial, we can kind of gloss through it quickly.
Yeah. Yeah, I I will sort of add, the commission has got some experience, exact, for example, a stock transfer that's curative. About, because you know it's gonna come before you for adjudication use. You're pretty deliberate about staying away from discussing the merits and stopping the applicant from getting too into the weeds because. Uh it's gonna prejudice the adjudication, so you do have some experience with that sort of uh. Um compartmentalization.
Yeah, no, 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 and 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 your concerns are well taken, so.
Yeah, that's good to talk about.
Yeah, and it's a proof of concept and so a pilot so that we can. We'll all learn from it, I'm sure.
So I don't know, do we want to leave where the history part is just blank, or do we want to input something? In regards to like they've turned in everything with a checkbox and. That yeah, like that they've, you know, this is the last time we spoke with a investigator, or this is the last time we've heard from the liquor commission. I don't know.
So even with today's hearing with the specials of the the one that came before you, the twenty five thirty five. I I I spoke with the investigator, I I can, you know, relate that I can tell you that we're waiting for stuff.
Okay.
And I think you've been like that, so that way it doesn't leave you in a dark. And we can do it like that to be more transparent, but as far as like other things that, you know. It it may take a little bit work of progress on how to explain it without compromising.
But maybe with the pilot, we kind of leave it open like this and then let's see how it goes and.
Yeah.
As once we kind of get it ready for. Get the trading wheels off, we might be, we do that to make it faster and more standardized.
Yeah, I I'm just thinking of Liza. While we're doing, you say it's either them or us, that's all we're doing and making a choice realistically.
Well, I I guess um ahead of time though, um. With any new specials that or specials of catering that's connected with a newer transfer. I can prepare per week. Uh a s- basic of explanation as to the position as standing. And I can give you a basic.
Be ready.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Say again to move forward?
Let's go do it. So we will move forward with the with the pilot.
Yeah, awesome.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, yeah. Alright, and we have um. Uh before before we move off, I'm sorry to keep on interrupting, but. Sure, uh for next week's agenda, we'll add an item number twelve legislative update or legislative legislative discussion.
Okay.
For next week.
Awesome.
That's all I got.
And that goes well into line.
Okay.
So uh as you know, we've spoken before, um we continue to uh recruit for L C I ones. I think it's essential for us to have that pipeline filled as um every, a a lot of things and our 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 ability to address capacity issues. Uh depend on on that. Uh we're close to having a a a full boat in terms of S C I ones. A couple more. But then after that, uh pretty much done because we uh us. With the reorganization, we took some L C I one positions, L C I two positions and moved them to L C I twos. So that we could create that a possibility of affordability. The agency. And as she as you know, uh filling those positions uh. Will be will be will take some time because of the the way things are structured, but we're trying to find ways to. To bring additional resources in. Uh because we 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 know that thi- this is critical to be to be more efficient. And in our in processing uh or the investigation of applications. Uh I think uh there's the segue, uh administrator, her eye and I were were met with uh the administrators of. The other uh islands, we met with Hawaii, Maui and Kauai. And essentially we discussed uh items uh such as the uh. The investigator's workshop that will be occurring on on Waukegan this this year. And where we are in that, we talked and we also talked about. What's going on in the legislature and 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 things that concern them. So a a at least it's it's so, oh, if the the meeting provides way for us to coordinate some efforts. That that we have and to talk about some things that affect. And I and I think uh just to let you know, uh. I think uh we 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 finish, I I think I've told you, I've told you this already, that we finished our consultation period. With regard to policy procedures for uh the random. Uh assignment over team inspections of the body worn cameras, the geolocation data, things probably you continue to hear. From issue where they may have some concerns, which uh we'll take consideration once, once we know what they are. And again, I just to reiterate that these are, in a sense, pilots and and that. Uh nothing is completely written in stone, I guess, that's what it put it, because if if there are some things that are a concern operationally, then we'll take that. And we'll let you know if if something, i- i- if there are things that are a concern operationally, as we move forward with these things.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Um I'm gonna ask you this almost every time. Data migration to their system.
Data migration continues to be also part and parcel of our ability to get the geolocation and randomization of of. Of uh of of inspections.
They're they're a little separate, though. One is the software contract to move forward and we could.
Yeah.
We could do the data migration without those pieces going forward.
It's a question of funding.
Yeah, no, that's my question.
Uh it's a question of, so so uh the 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 contract laps. And so we need to extend that contract. We are in the process of extending that contract. For this point, a couple of years as opposed to one year, because of the time it takes to go through. Uh it's the the our requests, I'll just call it requests, uh are are um. Being looked after by by um by the F S procurement. Uh they're aware of it, they're aware of the importance of it. For the agency uh as we move forward, not only. For our operational, but also because of the settlement that we have in the links.
Okay. Okay, uh item number twenty, any announcements?